So, thank you all for taking the time during the day to meet with us. This is usually the time Suzie and I get a chance to chat on Tuesdays about, you know, where she's going, things that are going down. Last week, we talked about the school board meeting and, you know, trying to be as fiscally flexible as we can in the next year's budget. And with some of the hiring, one of the questions that came up, and that's the first agenda item, is the guidance position. And Suzie was very thankful that it went from .5 to .6 to start out. But she asked if there was the possibility of even making it more full-time, with some of the concerns that we're looking at, either re-entering, you know, in many different scenarios, and, you know, what kids are going through. So I said that that would be a discussion that would have to be at this level to increase that. And the reason we asked to do it today is that she's going to start interviewing candidates this week and wanted to know if she's going to be interviewing for a .6 or if it would be anything greater. And I kind of shared our concerns with Suzie, but said, you know, let's, here's your first chance to talk with the board and let them know why you would advocate for something more than .6 at first and let the board hear. And she did know that, you know, we had thrown it around at our last meeting from the recommendation from Dr. Bobby Kelly, but we had felt that at that time that there's too many unforeseen, you know, costs that we may have as we re-enter our buildings or still, you know, instruct remotely, that we wanted to have that flexibility in the budget for next year. So she totally understood that, but I'm going to turn it over to you, Suzie, and kind of, you know, you know, give the board some of the thinking that you had and allow them to kind of give you some question and answering about, you know, what you're thinking.
Of course. So first and foremost, you guys, I honestly do appreciate you guys letting me talk to you and being flexible and even listening to the ideas that I have about it. I would suggest that, one, you get, you might get a different candidate if they knew it was full-time. That's, that was first and foremost in my mind. Second, I think that, I guess, part of my thought with coming back to you guys was that when Chris and I spoke, he said, you know, we might increase it halfway through the year. And then that's when I got excited. I was like, oh, good, there's some wiggle room. Okay, can we have it at the beginning of the year? And so, and here's why. Right now, at least at Hill where I am, and obviously I can only speak to that, our teachers are starting to re-enter the building now to start cleaning up. And that's happening in schools. I'm sure, I think it's even happening at Newfields right now. It's such an emotional experience. It seems like apocalyptic, just coming back into the building and seeing students' belongings. And I've had many texts, and I know that my staff is a little emotional right now because we're making this transition. But I think that we should be considerate about this, how great the need is going to be for that type of support person. I think it will be so stressful and emotional for students to come back into the building. There's been such a great loss during this period of time that we, until we're faced with it, like going back into the building and seeing the last book that you read on your desk or seeing the friend that you're not going to get to say goodbye to because you've split schools and you're going to another school, all the different scenarios that run through. That's a pretty big package to ask a five-year-old, a six-year-old, an eight-year-old that don't have all of the tools yet to know how to interpret what's happening. There's a lot of fear, I believe. Because when you ask adults to do it and go back into the building and their junk shows emotionally, that tells me that that's going to be, just that transition alone is going to be pretty intense. Then if you think about, one, there's a transition of an administrator, so there's some transition piece there. It just, it seems to me like if there's any wiggle room in our budget and potentially figuring out other ways to manipulate the budget and wait a year for something else, if we could make that consideration to make it full-time, I think it would serve us well. I really do.
Okay. Do we know what type of, this might be a question for Chris, but can, if we're going to expand this to full-time, what are the considerations for when the kids do go back to school? And can we, in some way, shape, or form, have them work with the school nurse in tandem to make sure that, because they're both going to be overwhelmed. If this is a full-time position, they're both going to be absolutely crazed. Because I think you're right. My kids, I mean, they're a mess. But they're, but they're doing better than others. So maybe taking consideration into, you know, I don't have a problem going to full-time, we just got to have to justify it financially. Figuring out how we're going to pay for the PPE that we're probably going to have to get, what's going to be the re-entry process? Is that going to, you know, if we don't re-enter for, you know, until January, if that's a possibility, then, you know, how is this person going to integrate with the current student body, being a brand-new position?
To that?
Go for it. What?
I can answer that. Yes. I think that that person's job, if they start July 1st, they could start the work immediately. Just like I want to be able to have visits with the people who are willing and open to have a Zoom with me and start making those connections. I think it will be imperative, whether it's .6 or full-time, for that person to start building relationships, for them to start knowing names, for them to, because their work is going to be big and heavy. So all that groundwork needs to happen as soon as possible. I mean, this is a really crummy time to lose a counselor.
And she's amazing, too. She's, I'm not kidding. She is amazing. I would, I would even love to go back to her and say, hey, come here, come here.
That's hot.
I would have no problem with that.
We'll offer you a little more. My, my mind was right there.
Yeah, she's, she's wonderful. She is absolutely wonderful, and she has the kids' hearts.
So if it's her or somebody else, I still think it's that, wow, there's a lot to do, right? It's like we have a feast out in front of us and we have maybe one kitchen cook. I mean, we need, you know, the more we can have on our social-emotional front, the better. So I would, like I said, I think that they would need to start making connections immediately and that they would just start doing those lunch bunches, they would, even during the summer months, right?
Now, Suz, just so though, I think, towards that end, we can't force anybody to work during the summer. There's no way she could, would have to, would have to be on her own. We couldn't even pay her for it. I do think financially, I think it irresponsible of us to put money towards something we don't even know what's going to happen. I mean, if we, I mean, you guys know, you two know what the budget is. We've shelved all the construction stuff. We've already put a hiring freeze on. We already said we weren't going to hire the job coach. So then to go put money towards something and we have no idea what the bill's going to be coming in, I just don't see how it's any way nearly possible to run the budget and try to deal with the unforeseen, which, you know, as David said, we're not going to know till mid-July what that is. That's when he's going to come out with his plan. And Chris, if I'm wrong, there's a possibility that plan changes because something else changes.
So I kind of agree with both you, Tom, and you, Jane. But I, so my opinion is, no matter what the scenario is, that, like, let's take this one. Let's say only K through 5 go back and we distribute six feet. If we do that, we're asking children not to be children because they won't be able to touch each other. Imagine the emotional impact on a kindergartner to say, no, you have to stay six feet away from your friend. Like, that's just, to me, somewhat impractical. So I don't, I think, no matter what the scenario here, I would like to find a way to get a full-time resource here because the stress in these homes, the stress of the, like, the shock of going back, no matter if it's, you know, whatever four scenarios ends up being the outcome. Um, these kids are, I mean, they've been put in a blender. You know, their entire lives are turned upside down, and the level of stress, you know, are in these homes. And I know that with working parents, like, what are we, you know, what do we do? These kids are going to have a drastic life shift. So...
But we've already said, though, but we've already said, we'd be willing to throw money at the problem if we find out we need it. So it's not like we're saying we're not going to do it, but if, like, to Jane's point, if we don't go to January, then I don't see how spending an extra $35,000 is a good use of funds for someone to be online five days. Like, I just, and because the level of care at that stage is going to be different than if there was level of care at the school. I think this is a decision that can wait because we, but we're not saying we're not going to do it, but I would rather address the problem as the problem comes.
Do we look at interviewing and letting them know, hey, this position could be X, it could be Y, it could be C? And then when they're hired and when we know, like, we're going to know what the plan is when, Chris, like, July?
Hopefully, yeah. I mean, it's whatever. Right. It's what we get for guidance from, you know, one, from the state. If the governor doesn't open up the schools, we can't go back, you know, so we're remote, you know? So that's the key lynch right there. The second one is, what does the health and medical world say? I mean, we're on, you know, we're a border to Boston, and as social distancing and these rules get, you know, loosened up, you know, the call I was on Thursday, we started to see a spike again. And one, it's for two reasons. One, we're testing more people, so we're finding out who is now actually has it because more and more sites are testing. But also, as things have laxed, they've seen, you know, introduced to new cases. So, you know, is it because we're testing more people or is it because the social distancing has laxed? And, you know, you see all around that not as many people, not everyone takes it as serious as everyone else. So I think there's a lot of unforeseen costs or things that we don't know when we're going to be looking to open up in August. So it's really difficult.
Well, and what about the kids whose parents? I mean, if I had a kid there that was even vaguely going to be compromised, whatever, like, I'm not sending them. We're still going to be required to have to educate them. So now, and Chris, I'm sure you guys are looking into this, too. It's just like, that could be another cost, not to mention the cost. You guys saw the numbers for, like, getting masks. I mean, holy moly.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have the extra money. Like, we can't, there is nothing else to cut to get the money of what we have other than not, we only have this because we're not hiring the job, the coach, and we're not, not doing any of the projects. So you start spending that money. There's no money to get. Like, we can't ask for more money.
Sure. And maybe some of it's going to end up having to be on parents, too. Like, I'm just thinking for me, hey, you have to buy masks for your kid.
Yeah, but you can't, that, and I hear you, but that's not something you can enforce because now you're putting a financial charge on their ability to go to school. We'd get sued and we'd lose.
So just to give you, just to give you numbers, if, so if our current guidance counselor was full-time right now, it would be a difference of $38,000. So that's, you know, that's the starting point of where we're at. And that's depending on if anybody new comes in at full-time, what they get with their medical, dental, you know? So that could, that could go up, it could go down. We don't have control of that. But right now, if our guidance counselor was full-time, it's $38,890. It would be the additional cost to employ.
So almost $40,000.
Yeah. So if you take that out of what we saved, which was close to 140, between 140 and 160, you're down to $100,000, and then you start talking about PPE. And, you know, if we get, yeah, if we get things from the state, as essential businesses have from the state, then that helps out with that PPE cost. But as we're doing these subcommittees and planning, there's so many inevitables that are coming up. So that's, I just want to give you the true numbers of where you would be starting at. And that, that would be the, you know, kind of the minimum, you know? Because that, that employee, you know, I'm sure if you have a full-time employee, they, they might come in with more education or experience, which would drive that number up. So that's just another thought consideration.
I know that, um...
Here's, here's my thought. And, because I always like to think of like, okay, how can we make this work? Because I, I do, I really do think this is going to be a very needed role. So if we said, all right, here's, here's our budget for, like, okay, it's going to be 40% more, where can we find that money? Is that even possible? Is this a possibility that we can take it from somewhere else? Or like, I guess I just don't know all of the scenarios that could be, like, what could be the plan to make this happen? Instead of just being like, ah, we don't know, there are too many unseen's, we don't know what the salary would be. Like, we could, we could say, here's the salary, and this is what we have planned because we took it from there. Or, I don't know, I just, just a thought to throw out there. Like, is there some way we can make this happen but still keep the expenses where they're, you know, like, kind of where they're at without accruing that additional $40,000? Can we take it from somewhere else?
So when we presented the budget to you, about 94% of our budget is contractual, which we have no say over. So that other 6% really comes out of what we've already done. And that, last year was about $250,000, so a quarter of a million dollars really what we had control over. That was your school operations and plant, your supplies, and things that are not under contractual obligation. So trying to, you know, we'd already found 140 earmarked by not hiring someone new, which we had control over in doing those projects. Now you're stealing, if you, if you do it, we're going to, we have to say, how do we not give supplies to kids or teachers to make up for this? So it's really difficult in your budget to find, you know, 5,000, nonetheless, 40,000, when your budget is so, so small. If this was a $100 million budget, we'd say, yeah, we can find 40,000 in there. But when your budget is under 3 million, it's really, that's, that becomes really tedious. And I'd hate to say, kids go without. So that's, but that's, that's your choice. But that's, that's the reality is that that'd be really daunting for anybody to try and find $40,000 out of, out of a budget that's really so small.
And are there any, I mean, I know we're not qualified for a lot of those Title I services, but are there any other grants or any, anywhere else that we can look?
Not really. I mean, most of the grants that Suzie will have next year for Newfields, you know, your Title II, your Title IV, I mean, your Title II is under 5,000, your Title IV is about 10,000. She has the REAP grant, which is, would be about 16,000 next year. So again, those are things that we can still provide professional development for our teachers or as we progress on, that you're still going to want to do. You still want your teachers learning and growing while they're at home as part of their day. So you, can you use, you can't, you can't hire under Title II with any of that money. You can't, other than consulting or professional development, but you can't, you can't surplant your budget by adding this, this position. So Title II, Title IV, you can't, you know, Title, your REAP grant, you could pay for services out of that. So you really have that $16,000 pot to do that. However, I would reiterate the recommendation, and Suzie have talked about this, is we're going to need to do some technology upgrades so that we can be as one-to-one as possible for next year. And that's where I'd really dedicate those monies to, to spend them so that kids had the technology or teachers had the technology subscriptions that we didn't think about so that they can continue to instruct remotely and add more to that, through those grant funds.
Yeah, I mean, are there any other grant funds? I know that Bobby had sent me over a note on maybe looking at maybe PPE grants, things along those lines. I think he sent it over to you, Chris, I'm not sure. I asked him to. But I can forward it to you now if you'd like. But it's, you know, going through the Project Aware Mental Health teaching, you know, training grants, you know, all these different grants that we could investigate and see if we're eligible for. And then, you know, figuring out where we can defer costs in, you know, in some of those unexpected areas like PPE that we just don't know what we're going to end up having to do there. Granted, this doesn't help us with our immediate issue.
Can I, can I, I just need a clear, I need some clarification. Is one of the possibilities that in the long term, we would go full-time with a, with a, with a counselor? Is that on the table?
Yeah, I think that would be, be something that could be presented for the next budget cycle, would be, hey, you know what I think we really need? And then we have the data to back it up as to why we needed it. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think that's definitely the conversation is when we start building the budget for the next goal, without doubt.
But was there conversation prior about potentially increasing this year? No? Okay. Tom, to your, y'all, I totally get the numbers. I do. And, you know, we can walk away from this meeting and I'll respect any decision that y'all make and we'll figure it out inside the building. I think that my, my, to your point of, you know, we're going to be in remote learning potentially for X amount of time, what would that counselor be doing? I do think, consideration of all the proactive work that could happen because when we get back in the building, no matter when it is, it is, we are talking a whole new ballgame. Even if we have a vaccine, the way that we do business changes from here out. And, I mean, when we're talking about giving students hula hoops, kindergartners hula hoops, so that they understand what, you know, distance they need, that's a, that, that's not only for students and teachers, that's for parents as well. It's, it's a, to me, it seems like the role that we should be most serious about. As much as I want technology, and I do, and we'll get there. I want a fantastic steam lab, and we'll get there. And I want instructional coaches. But where we are in the life of our world right now, this position is paramount. And I, if I, if I need to get research, and I should have, my, you know, my mistake to state just how much of a trauma and crisis students are going to be facing, I will absolutely do that and present that or send that your way. I, you know, we all don't know each other very well yet. I, this is a big ask to me, and I usually go find the money myself and bring it to you and say, look what I found. Here's $100,000 for, you know, X, Y, or Z that we need. But we're in this crisis right now. And so those are my thoughts about that. But again, I completely respect, you know, numbers are numbers, and we have to understand that our pockets aren't endless and, you know, money does not grow on trees, and we have to be responsible. But I am coming to you in a crisis saying, I guarantee you, in my professional opinion, our students, our teachers, and our families will need more support than .6 of a counselor. No matter how we get it.
Totally hear you. I've been teaching for, in education for 30 years, so I'm totally with you. I do see where that is. The rough side of all this is, though, making a decision now, not knowing what the other factors are that are coming in July and August. I just think it's putting the horse way ahead, the cart way ahead of the horse, before we actually have to do it. And I think it makes sense on our end to be prudent and try to make sure we can handle what some of the possibilities coming up. But if we hire, that's 40,000, we can now not be talking about making hard cuts, do other things that could be supplies, which means now what, teachers supposed to get their own supplies? Like, the whole thing spirals. Unfortunately, I think it's timing more than anything right now, which is why I don't think I could ever sign off on that idea.
That's understandable. There are so many unknowns.
Right. That's the biggest issue.
Would it be, in the short term, a possibility of maybe bringing it up to .7 or .8? I mean, what does that impact?
With that being in...
If you go to a .7 or .8, to me, that feels different as a person that you're, as a candidate, to say, we want to bring you on full-time. That is our intention. A .6, it feels like something that could be shared with another school. And once you start sharing with another school, you're not fully committed to where you are, especially in a counselor role, you know? So I obviously am, and, you know, I'm up for anything that, that increases it, understanding the numbers.
What would the budget be? That if we said, listen, we hadn't planned for this to happen, obviously. Therefore, this position is not in the budget this year to be full-time. We also understand the very real scenario of this is probably going to need to be a full-time position going forward, even for years, like, after this. I could see that the, the impact of this moment is going to have lasting effects. So if we could say this will be something moving forward that we're going to put in next year as a, as a needed role, as a full-time position, that's why it's up to like .7? What would be the, the difference there in pricing, like, or in cost?
Or Chris is just running the numbers really fast.
And is that something maybe we feel more comfortable with, to at least position ourselves? Plus, then if we do get into a situation where, oh my gosh, this is absolutely a full-time need now, they're not split with schools, so they can, you know, they can have that bandwidth to jump in as a full-time need if that arises in September.
I got to tell you, though, guys, having, I don't think, honestly, that the psychological impact is going to be anywhere near the, the the cause for concern. I mean, we have really small classes. We have teachers who know exactly what they're doing. They're going to be doing some of this exact same thing. We have a special ed teacher who's doing a hell of a job, I know, over the summer. I'm so far, sorry, before the summer starts. And I think they're, they're also part of that thing. It's not like every kid with an issue is going to see the guidance counselor. Like, that's not how it works anyways. And I just think that raising it to .6, I think, was something that made sense because we could do it. But like, to .7 or to .8, I don't think that's that big of a difference that, and again, I just think we need to save the money. Like, there is, I don't forget, there is absolutely no option of getting more money.
Yeah.
There is not a goddamn thing we can do about that, and we can't ask for more money. And if we spend, we literally would have to cut. And I don't even know, like, as Chris said, I don't even know what there is to cut. I mean, there just isn't anything there. So how do we protect for, what if something happens and we need to fix something, for crying out loud? Like, we got all sorts of issues that we don't even know about. I think this one personally can wait. You actually find out if there is this huge issue to address.
So I just ran the numbers for you at .8, which would be four days a week. .7 gets a little tricky on how those hours look like. So if you were going to go up, I'd go either .8 or full-time. The .7, .9 really difficult. But .8, it would be current, if, based on our current staffing, would be an additional $23,000.
Yeah, that's still high.
Yeah, that's too much. Yeah, this is not...
Not easy decisions here.
I mean, I hate to say it, I, I'm really want it. I think, I think Tom's right. We have to wait until July, August, or September to really make sure that this money is going to be incredibly well-spent. I don't, I don't, and I hate saying that. I mean, I honestly, really, 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 really think it's necessary, but until the proof is in the pudding, there's not much there.
So I, Tom, I 100% understand being prudent. I do. And I think there's wisdom to that. I guess my request of you guys is to be open for the future, for this to be front and center. Because I do think, and again, Tom, to your point, yes, it's a whole-school effort to understand social-emotional learning, but that counselor should be the point person for that. And more now than ever, we need someone who is fantastic in that role so that our teachers can be as best-equipped as possible to take care of all of the students, social-emotional. Because if they're not in a place to learn, we're not doing anything, you know? If they're, if they can't get past their own emotions, it doesn't matter if we have the best math curriculum. It really doesn't. So I guess that would be my request, just that this stays on the table and that we are really open about where we are and and how to go from there.
Yeah, I would say let's keep it on the schedule.
Yeah. Yeah, we're 100% on board with, or I am 100% with that line of thinking.
Absolutely.
Yeah, not a problem at all.
Okay. Okay. It's an interesting time to.
I was thinking about that. I was thinking about you just this morning. I was like, oh my gosh.
Well, just because there's so much trust needs to be established immediately because such big, important decisions need to be made, right? And so just a lot of respect and a lot of trust and, and like, I'm super appreciative that y'all took the meeting today because, you know, it gives me a greater understanding of how you guys make decisions and, and then it lets you guys know where my heartbeat is and what I'm thinking of as far as the students and, and their needs and the, and the faculty's needs. So I really appreciate it.
And on this, I don't think we've talked about it as a group yet, but I think I mentioned in the last school board meeting, it might be prudent for us to meet through the summer. I know we normally don't. But I think these decisions are gonna come up. They're gonna come up over the summer, especially if we don't know what we're, what's happening with openings and budgets up until like the last minute.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine. That, that's what I was thinking, the same thing too, Jane. Chance that we were, it's, it's one day a month. It should not be a big deal.
Yep.
Lord knows it can't go anywhere, so.
No, I know. Uh, sorry, I'm going on vacation. I'm going to go in the backyard for a month.
Yes, an eternal staycation.
Yes.
Absolutely. All right, what else we got on the agenda?
The last thing we had is, Dr. Ryan had talked about the joint board about any non-certified staff making the recommendation of a one to a 1.5% raise. Again, trying to keep costs down. That's really difficult in new fields because that's three employees. And we had budgeted for them to have a 3% raise. And it equates to $600 of what we're, we're asking.
A person or total?
Total. When, one oversight is that we never calculated a, a raise for, for the cafeteria supervisor. So it would increase that, but it would be a, that raise would be about $330 for her total for the year. So for the three individuals that, that I would be recommending, I, I just really struggle for those three individuals to get a 1.5% raise when, you know, everybody else in the building, based on contracts, is getting at least a 2% raise. So I, I bring it up to you, where would you like to present a raise into their, their budget? So everybody else except for cafeteria and custodial services are covered under a contract. So those would be areas that are not covered. And I just really struggle, you know, with a 1.5% raise when everyone else is getting at least a 2% raise.
And what, what happens in this scenario if this building itself doesn't reopen?
Sure.
With those options?
Well, we had made a decision for this year to pay all our employees. I will tell you that Dr. Ryan did talk about that we are looking at making a definition of what is essential and non-essential employees, you know, so possibly a part-time, you know, position may not be essential while we're, we're learning from remote, you know, if they can't come in and do their job. I would tell you that a, a full-time custodian is, is essential because they're still at the building, checking on it, making sure there's nothing leaking or, or waters or, or critters getting into your building, still, you know, getting deliveries, still, you know, keeping the upkeep of your building, your grounds. So we've had that conversation about what's essential and what's non-essential and, and those, you know, obviously, we can't serve food, that's not an essential service, so that they would not, you know, their, their contract would not start until we, they became essential again when we opened up, opened it up. And so that, that is a discussion that, that would be presented to the whole joint board of what is determined as essential and non-essential. And again, that's up to you as a board. You know, you'd say, we're going to pay everyone throughout next year, whether they're, we're doing remote or we're not. So that's up to you.
In terms of that question, I think we can table that until we find out whether or not we're even coming back.
Right.
Yeah.
Have to have a discussion about it. And then in, what, what would the Paris get? And what do we negotiate for them? Two?
2% for the Paris.
So I mean, I would do two.
Yeah. That's where my head went.
Doesn't matter to me. I mean, it's nothing. It's like 10 bucks a paycheck. So.
Yeah, I just didn't want them getting less.
Yeah, no, absolutely not. No, I completely.
I just think it sends a bad message. Oh, hey, you're, you know, some of you are still working every day in the building and we're going to pay you less to keep it clean and sanitized. So that's why I had it. So if you're comfortable with 2%, then I'll let human resources know that, that those contracts will go out as a 2% raise.
And we might be, if the, if the kids do go back at some point, then the cleaning is going to be.
Well, that's, yeah.
It's going to be even more than they, they're not going to be doing any side projects. They're going to be sanitizing desks and sanitizing pencils. So.
Their workload's going to be dramatically increased.
Yeah.
So Tom, I just need an official motion for 2% rate.
I'll make a motion to give those three workers a 2% raise.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Cool.
I appreciate it.
That's it for today, right?
It's all we have for today.
Yeah, we'll take up the other stuff at our next meeting.
Correct.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Suzie.
All right. Bye.
Bye.